Oh, yes, we are. Look, you asked and he... Thank you. Alright, here we are, on tape now.
Okay.
We're going to start the work session at... Is that 9:40?
Hey, try again.
Hello? Oh, it is. I think they were just having chocolate fun back there and they couldn't hear me. Anyway, we will start this work session at 9:40. And, Mrs. O'Brien?
Everybody is in attendance.
Yes, we are all still here.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Whoa, look at that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Look at you smile, Ms. Miglerino.
Because it's not his turn.
Whose turn is it?
It is my turn.
Oh, is it doctor?
Like, it's your turn.
Doctor Zurbak, please, let's go.
Alright, let's rock and roll. Good evening, President Ordway, members of the board, Dr. Finch, and members of our community. This work session is a traditional school status update. Many of you were in attendance last night for this presentation. This will cover somewhat similar content, but there will be a few new items that are added. And, so let's get going. For the overview, in terms of the... What is the purpose of the meeting? The purpose is to provide you with an update as far as how the district is proceeding with establishing the traditional school in the Bel Air community. To provide some context and the timeline to this, I believe when we went back and did a document analysis, we uncovered that Dr. Finch first made the communication through a board update about traditional schools back two years ago in 2017. And then, you are aware of the multiple updates that have come through over the three years, which have given various pieces of information regarding how we are thinking and approaching traditional schools and open boundary schools and other signature programs or specialty school programs. I know that Dr. Finch has included this as well as part of his priority goals for enrollment and the strategic plan. There also have been two presentations that I personally have done here for the governing board, so both in January and in April. I gave presentations which updated the board as to the school visits that we did and also with some of the research that we conducted vis-à-vis the document analysis and the website analysis. In November 2019, Dr. Finch, myself, and Ms. Moffett, we did inform the Bel Air staff as far as the intentions of the district. And then, also with our boundary meetings, which we have been hearing about for the prior hour and some change, that Dr. Smith and myself, we have held some informational meetings at Deer Valley High School, which have contained much information regarding what we are intending to do with Bel Air to make it a thriving school for many years to come in the community. So, to recapture some of what has been talked about, so I don't... I won't go over it in length, but I do want to make sure it's clear that much of the efforts in terms of what we are looking to do is to recapture some of our students who have left our schools and have gone to... Excuse me, charter schools in search of this traditional concept model. We know that 16% of our population, of our student population, has chosen to enroll, and many times, they have chosen to enroll in schools that have this traditional concept to it. And so, as we continue to see many of these charters in the area, especially around Bel Air, which I'll get to in just a moment in another slide, we know that this is something that we don't want to ignore. We want to attack it head-on, we want to go right at it, and make sure that this is not something where we see in 10 years, or in five years, or even in two years, that the enrollment has gotten so low that we do not have a sustainable enrollment and where we might have to even look at possible closure. That is not something that we want to do, and so we want to make sure, again, that we have that thriving school. So, do parents want traditional? This slide, in a visual manner, captures very much the demand that parents are displaying for these types of schools. Right there, as it's listed in terms of public school districts, you can see that we are probably a little bit late to the game in terms of the charter schools, or the traditional schools. You can see this list, many are our neighbor districts and others are near to us but may not be adjacent. And you can also see in that list that many of these schools in these districts have wait lists to them. So, clearly, the parents are demanding that. On the right side of that, even though it's a little bit cut off on the screen, that column lists the charter schools that have the traditional focus or have traditional elements to the charter school. And so, that traditional element might be something like uniforms, it could be strong parental involvement, it could be the back-to-basics philosophy for their curriculum. So, again, it's either a charter school with an entire traditional focus or a charter school that has some of those elements. And you can see right there, there's a long list of schools that are in the Bel Air area. How we define that is we did a search on MapQuest and looked at schools that are within a 10- to 15-minute drive of Bel Air school, and all of these appeared with the traditional focus. We have been looking at names for the school. Our proposed name is the Traditional Academy at Bel Air. There were other names that we looked at, but the team felt that this name captured what we were trying to communicate to the parents and to the community. Two things in particular. One, if you look back at the previous slide with the charter schools, you will see that many of those have "traditional" in the name. And so, we know that that is something that is catching the eye of our parents. The second item is the fact that Bel Air is... It's a neighborhood that has been with the district for a very, very long time. It's a neighborhood that the community loves, and so we wanted to make sure that we captured both of those elements in the name. And we'll be bringing that forward to you for approval. Boundary implications, so now connecting to what Mr. Miglerino talked about earlier in his portion of the evening. So, he proposed that... Or, in the proposal, you'll see that there was an open boundary component to this. And so, we believe this does have a benefit for the families that are in the current existing Bel Air zone, and the reason is this, is that those families would then have the option to choose the Bel Air Traditional School. If they so chose, if that was something that they wanted for their child, or if they didn't want that traditional concept, then the families could choose the school of their new attendant zone. And so, as you saw, again, in the prior component, that the current zone is partitioned into two zones with Mirage and Greenbrier picking up the current zone. So, how will the word get out? This is something that's been asked in both presentations, and so we have a number of ways that we're looking to communicate to both the existing Bel Air community and the entire, or a broadened expansion of the Deer Valley Unified School District. And so, we look to do some of our direct mailings. In fact, we have... Ms. Alred has been supporting us with that. This is an example of a mailer that we are looking to send out very shortly, and we have other mailers that are currently getting ready to be sent out as well. We look to have updates to the website. I believe I put it in the board update, that we have a FAQ website that's up, and you parents can access that if they go to the Bel Air website, and there it has more information as far as what we are looking to do. We're looking to get more action on social media to promote the school, also to have parent ambassadors, so parents who want to help communicate about what we're doing at that school, and then also with some events that we plan to do so that the parents can come and see who the principal is, and then eventually, who the teachers are at the school. And then, of course, word of mouth is a strategic tool that we would use as well. So, the enrollment windows, we have... In our research, when we have looked at, or talked with, the folks who have established these schools, they talked about the importance of establishing these windows. And so, these windows make sure that families know and helps create urgency and demand that we want to establish what the enrollment might be as we look to staff the school. And so, we have a current window which has just opened. We notified the parents that attended the Bel Air informational meeting last night, and we look to provide written notice to the families this week so that they are aware of that. And that would continue and end on the January 15th window, which is when the priority window closes for all the schools for open enrollment, because remember, any families that would go to the Traditional Academy at Bel Air would need to fill out an open enrollment, regardless of where they lived, even if they were in the existing Bel Air attendant zone now, because that would change under the boundary proposals. We then would look at a second priority window for families, and that would run for in the dates that we have stated there, and then so on, we would do that until we reached a point where we felt that capacity was reached for next year. So, before we look at...
Want to go through the whole thing first? Okay. Don't worry, I wrote my question down.
I know you did. Okay, so we'll get to staffing in just a second with Ms. Moffett, but I did want to talk briefly about one of the comments that was mentioned. I know that one of the comments in the public comment session asked if we had thought about waiting a year and doing a plan year, and I did want to remind the board that we did consider that, that was one of the options that we thought about. However, there were some reasons why we selected to move forward in the manner that we did. One of the reasons had to do with the modernization schedule. And so, the Bel Air building was already in line to have modernization done, and so, with those funds that were available, we looked at this as perhaps an opportune window to take advantage of some changes that might align to a traditional school with that. And so, let's take... Let's switch to staffing, and then we can come back to some of the other points as well. So, Jenna?
The process for staffing a traditional school, first off, we are going to take time to make sure that the job description or the specific requirements for certified staff members at this campus are specifically tailored to the philosophy of the campus as well. So, one of the reasons that we communicated to the staff that teachers are interviewing for this position is because we do need a match in the traditional philosophy. It is different, and we do have teachers that are passionate about other methods, and we want to make sure that they can stand behind what would be required at this campus. Second of all, the staffing process will initiate two weeks prior to the district annual cycle. You all are familiar with our staffing timelines, and we usually share those with you in a Friday update. We do have a draft prepared already, and we're looking right now that we will staff both the Bel Air campus and Campus 31, two weeks in advance. It's actually going to stretch out a little longer than the two weeks, starting February 7th. And what that means for this campus specifically is that the certified positions will post. Per the certified manual, they are to be posted for transfer three days prior to us making any moves or taking any action. So, that is also outlined in the staffing timeline. After those three days, the principal will be able to begin the staffing process. The same will be true for School 31 during that time. And to be clear, I believe someone mentioned it this evening, when those vacancies do post, all certified staff members across the district that are qualified to apply for those positions can apply for those positions during that two weeks. Then, on February 28th, we will initiate the rest of the district and those staffing timelines. Questions that often come up around this are, what about all of the certified staff members that don't secure a position either at Bel Air during the first cycle or the pre-cycle, or at School 31? Those staff members will be identified, and we will begin conversations with those staff members. Some of them will choose, and this is normal in our surplus process, some of those staff members will choose to sit and wait until another cycle of the staffing occurs, some will ask for us to assist them in finding a location, but we will not formally find, at least through surplus methods, a position until the rest of the district begins staffing, because we do want to provide another round of opportunity for those staff members to find a position. Another thing that could occur is that a staff member could interview for a third-grade position at one of those locations during pre-staffing, not secure it, and then a fifth-grade position may become available. They could apply for that one, and they might secure that position. So, we... It is best for at least the pre-round and the normal round to occur before we identify who our surplus employees are, and then we will work with those people to find a location that is agreeable to them. Then, after all of those rounds of staffing, each location across our district, Bel Air and School 31, that has a new vacancy, will follow the normal staff staffing timelines. The last day for transfer in our district is the last contract... By language, the last contract day of the 10-month administrator. We do have some flexibility there, though. We don't feel we will need to do this, but we do have precedence for this, and that is that we could work with DVEA in negotiations. Often, we might put... Informally agree to, and sometimes through an MOU, agree that we're going to extend that timeline into June if necessary. Then, other things to note... Oh, the last bullet to note. We have been meeting with some of our Bel Air certified staff members, who are anxious about what's ahead and stressed about what is ahead, and have provided some good ideas for us and things that we didn't think of or didn't consider. So, the human resources team will be going to the Bel Air campus. We are, I believe, next week, will be meeting with the front office staff to talk about staffing timelines and open enrollment processes. We know we will learn things that we maybe are not thinking of as we move through the spring months. The other thing that one of the staff members brought up was that there are many members at that campus that have been there for a really long time and have not had to interview in a really long time and are feeling nervous about it. And so, we're going to be providing opportunities for people to look at interview questions, practice interviewing, and other types of things like that to support them. We will also be present to go over the staffing timeline and answer any questions that they might have. We know that they might have more ideas, too, as we meet with them. We're trying to make the process, even though we know it is painful for many, as painless as we possibly can.
And let me add a little bit more in terms of the staffing piece, because, again, I know that this has been voiced as a pain point for some of our Bel Air staff members, as far as why do we need to reapply? So, in our research that we've done with our traditional schools that we've gone to visit and talked to the administrators, both at the site level, those who were involved at the start, and with the district administrators who were involved in the planning, they talked about the importance of making sure that the staff is fully committed to the philosophy of what is happening at the school and the traditional concepts that will be implemented in the school. And many of them said that this was one of the critical points for success with their schools, and that because each and every teacher at the school fully knew and fully understood the expectations that were going to occur at the school, and on top of that, again, were committed to those, that that was one of the reasons that these schools have become successful, and as you saw in one of those prior slides, that they were weightless at these schools. And so, that is... That's one of the reasons that we look to have folks reapply to this school. The other point that I wanted to bring up, too, and I had talked about why we are not waiting, I'll say, I think it's evident because of the boundary meeting we just had, but that was another reason, that since we are in the process of doing boundaries now and that this school looks at having an open boundary, that that's one of the reasons that we looked at, let's do this now and not wait in the future. Miglerino?
So, just to let the board know, we are in the process of the modernization project for Bel Air. I don't know that there'll be significant changes to the facility, so I think I used the word, it won't be drastically different. A classroom will still be a classroom, but we will take this opportunity to include any specific design features that would make it appear as a traditional school. So, the facade, maybe the curb appeal might change so that it would have some appearance of being a traditional school, which would, in my opinion, be more of a... Like, a historical architecture as opposed to the current architecture or the front of the school. I see a hand.
So, are you thinking like Grecian temple or Hogwarts? What are we talking about? Awesome, I'll look forward to that opening. I'll write in on my broomstick if it's Hogwarts.
Okay, as far... As far as transportation, again, this was covered earlier today, but there is no transportation provided at this time unless it's indicated in a child's IEP.
President Ordway, members of the board, Dr. Finch, as you know, we are bound by statute in the way we adopt new resources. As we look at the traditional school, we will look for back-to-basics resources in English language arts, reading, writing, listening, speaking, and mathematics, K6. This will also have a preschool, a developmental preschool, and so we will incorporate ideas of traditional school with our youngest learners in a developmental preschool. But mainly, this adoption for ELA and math materials will be for back-to-basics resources. What we typically saw across traditional schools that we visited, Spalding, Jackson Math, Open Court, very much back-to-basics types of materials. But, this would go out to all vendors to provide resources that would meet certain criteria that we will be looking for, for back-to-basics resources. There will be call to vendors, a community review will be very similar to what we've done. There will be a committee that comes together, and that committee will involve the new principal, as well as when the principal pulls the community, parents and the community together, they will be invited to participate, just like any of our adoptions, we invite community as well as educators to be part of it. We will make a recommendation to you all, similar to what we just did for K5 ELA and K2 Science, and then, at the next board meeting after that, you would approve or disapprove those resources that would be recommended. So, it will follow a very similar process. We will still have 60 days for public review, which is bound by statute.
Okay, so, in terms of the competitive advantage, so sometimes we have heard in the community still, well, hey, there's lots of charter schools that already have this traditional concept. Why do we need to have another one? Well, in addition to some of the rationale and reasons that we've already provided, and Dr. Finch frequently will remind folks that it's time for us to get in the game as well, we believe that we can do it better. And so, some of those reasons are listed here. One of our... And our first one is the fact that we have our certified teachers in our district, and we know that with our teachers at our traditional school, that we can do better, just flat-out right. We have preschool, we have our fine arts programs, we have our neighborhood and our partnership with Boys and Girls Club, that access to services at our district, when we have content experts, when we have experts in student support services, that they will be able to help the students that are at this traditional school, Bel Air. We know that that, too, is a competitive advantage, and then the fact that we offer such an array of clubs and activities. The next steps, and we covered this well with our parents last night, by communicating that we really are looking for parents to start getting involved now. In the website that we have, there is a format or a tool for them to log in some information with their contact info, and also to indicate which teams they might be willing to participate in to help establish the foundations for that school. And so, we look to have parents sign up and then to start organizing with the parents and with the principal once that principal is hired. These are the forms right here, if you haven't seen them, this is what's up on the website now, and so it shows you how parents can indicate their desire to get involved. Okay, so as far as rounding us out here, we plan on continuing to hold more informational meetings for the parents, especially at Bel Air, but also with Mirage and Greenbrier, as we know that this could affect them as well with the open boundary consideration. We look to support the staff, as Ms. Moffett said, with a transition, whether it would be at Bel Air or new school. We look to hire the principal. Of course, the boundaries have an impact with this on the 14th, and then we are aiming for a preview night on the 30th. With that, I would love to entertain questions.
Can I ask one first?
Oh, I guess I can. President, you certainly may.
I keep forgetting that, yes, I may. So, where it says that there's a traditional school preview night on the 30th, I was listening last night and thought that if we would have a formal tour night, or however they want to take it, one for the Mirage and one for Greenbrier, prior to that, then those parents would have an opportunity to know what they're going to would be prior to going to this preview night, so they'd have a clue of what was going on, and I think, too, might be an opportunity for Mirage prior to... So, people would see that it's going to be... Anyway, just a thought, because last night, if you remember, everybody was like, whoa, all in the same night, how am I going to know? And then, my second is for the qualifications for the... Is there some kind of a presentation that was made to the staff and maybe a video or a, hey, I'm going to come down and tell you, these are the qualifications of traditional schools? Are that too many questions?
Nope, that is just fine, President Ordway. So, let me respond to the first... Your first question or comment. So, I do remember that being stated by the parent, and that was a good comment that the parent made for us to think about, so absolutely, Ms. Alred and I will take that into consideration. I think there were a couple points that were made during that yesterday, as far as also maybe having some staggered times to make sure that those families who can only make it that night, that they can make multiple ones, but as well incorporating that idea that you talked about of having multiple opportunities, whether it be before and after, perhaps, for those families to make sure that they're able to make that informed decision as far as what makes the best sense for their child for next year. And then, it's for the second one, Ms. Moffett, do you want to respond to that?
Oh, you're not going to take that one?
We have not yet done that. All we have communicated, we've had one meeting with the Bel Air staff, and that was back in November. So, we will be doing that. Coming up in January, we will take some time to meet with the staff and explain what the curriculum is going to look like, and in advance of interviewing for the positions, we will be communicating the specific requirements for teaching at that campus. It has not been developed.
Okay, and is there...
And professional development requirements as well.
Is there any possibility, did you guys, when you arrived at this decision, was there a specific school or types of school that you... That drove you to that? Yes, no?
President Ordway, could you ask me that question again? Is there a specific school that what?
That delivered you to this traditional answer?
Sure. Yes, President Ordway, so one of the schools that we looked at in depth was in the Dyson School District, as they are in the process right now of doing the exact same thing. They took a school that had...
No, 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 not that part. The part of, how did you get to this version of the traditional school that we're going to use? Our version of it.
So, I think through our research, first of all, President Ordway, so again, we did multiple school visits throughout the valley, looked at different types of programs. So, there was, for instance, the classical traditional, you may recall, that was one of the conceptual schools that we looked at, and then we looked at others. And so, looking at an array of how this could look, we put together the common themes that were present across almost all of those schools, and so that's what we looked at.
Wow.
Emphatic about that, yeah. And so, most... Those common themes were the ones that we looked to brand and establish at this traditional school.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because if we're going to give our staff an opportunity to understand what qualifications they would need, I was just out there wondering if perhaps there's actual teachers that are on the ground doing this, so they can show, tell what happens when you're in the classroom, not what might happen. Kind of like when we had the first round, it was like, oh, nobody knew anything, and then the second round was much more helpful because people actually had that experience. I mean, just throw... I mean, just throwing, throwing it out there.
We do agree with you, and want to provide an opportunity when we come back from the holiday for all, first, the Bel Air staff, and then that will be communicated to anyone else that is interested in interviewing. But it, we can also just make it public, so that they can see if they are interested in interviewing.
I, I might not have said it right. I wanted to know if from those schools that you were at, if there might be a teacher or two that would like to involved in explaining what that is? So the teachers that are going to go for these positions and apply for these positions would have, I'm doing this right now, this is kinda, this is why it's different than what you've been doing.
Okay, I do understand that.
It's kind of like a coach.
Well, yeah.
Mentor.
A living example of-
Someone to come in and say, this is how we do it.
Right, this is, this is why it's different. So people understand why you're applying for the job as opposed to just staying.
That's certainly something we could do, President Ordway, and as well with that, we have staff members with us now that have taught in a traditional school, and also in an open boundary school, and so that are with us now. And so they may have come to us from one of those schools, so we could look to them as well for that.
Just, I mean, if we, if we have employees, you know, formalize them a little bit, and definitely get people that are currently-
Absolutely.
Educators that are currently doing it right now, so people can understand why there is a marked difference between-
The two conceptual-
That there is. Between it. Frank, sorry, let me like have seven questions.
That's okay. So I had a couple of questions, concerns. So we'll start with the parent priority windows from December tenth to January fifteenth. How was that timeline determined?
We wanted to make sure, well, first of all, the Bel Air is currently open for open enrollment. So we didn't want to pause and wait. As soon as Gary communicated with the, with the community, we wanted to make sure they had the ability that night, if they so wish, to go in and open enroll to that location. So that started the tenth. And then we learned by talking to other districts that setting a near future date helped in creating some urgency. It's not going to prevent us from opening it up again and recommunicating that it is still open, but it does assist us with staffing by trying to generate an initial push. But anybody right now can go in and complete an application.
So my concern is a couple of things with this. Number one, winter break falls right in the middle of your open enrollment window. Parents are busy getting ready for the holidays. They may either be going out of town or having guests coming into town, and then there's going to be a large chunk of time where they can't open enroll. I mean, the district office is closed. If they had questions, they couldn't get those answered. And you're asking people to make a decision when they don't really know what the school's going to look like, who's going to be running it, and who the teaching staff is. And for me, and I think for most of the parents that I worked with, say, at Copper Creek, their number one question is, what teacher will my child have? And they would want, many parents wanted their younger kids to have the same teacher their siblings had. So if I were at Bel Air and I were a parent, and this is what I would be presented with, I, I might even be looking for a charter school at this point. I would be very upset with this window. And I think someone mentioned asking them to buy something that they have no idea what it is. So, and my concern is, this can affect the success of the school. You're not setting yourselves up for success by doing this to your parents. My second question is, is there any certification requirement, special certificate or endorsement from the State Department of Education for teachers in a traditional academy?
President Ordway, Ms. Frank, to your first question or first point, we certainly can look at how we are advertising, what the priority window will be. However, open enrollment is open every single day, and we are taking open enrollment applications every single day, even past that window, because Peggy and I review it weekly. So those that will continue to enroll, we will continue to accept. We, we did just want to create some sense of, ooh, let's get that in now if we feel comfortable doing so. And we wanted to provide it right away for those who do like to jump in with both feet. But we certainly can communicate better and let them know that even past that date, they will have the opportunity to open enroll.
Yeah, and, and I guess my point is that most people, when they open enroll at a school, they're open enrolling there because they've heard something about the school, they know someone who went there, they know what they're getting themselves into. And I'm concerned that we're asking parents, we're taking parents at Bel Air, which is a school that's been around for a long time, and from what I understand, has had a, a stable staff who's been there a long time. And we're asking parents to buy into something that they have no idea what it is. I don't think that's going to get you good numbers.
Well, I can answer that, or at least chime in on it. We're actually following the exact same timelines Dice Art, who just did that this year. They started at the same time we did. And so we actually are liberating much of their data, much of their approaches to advertising. This whole concept of a fake urgency is what they recommended, their consultants recommended. This concept of buy now, if you want to jump in, jump in now. But are we going to continue to have the open enrollment till June, whatever? Probably. We're gonna, it's gonna be extended until the school fills. So, and we know, according to Dice Art, who's doing this today, they struggled at the beginning, and we assume we're gonna struggle as well to bring in, we're not gonna fill to the rim the first year is my point.
Right.
It'll probably be at least three years until it settles at the right number. So we're just actually borrowing from, from Dice Art, their strategies, and they gave us some great strategies that work for them. That's where it comes from.
Okay, so that, that does help to have that background, but I guess my main point here is I think this is unfair to parents.
We'll educate as we go.
My next question about the certification requirements and endorsements, because I'm not aware of anything. So any teacher in this district who has a certificate, including any teacher at Bel Air, meets the requirements to teach at a traditional academy.
That is correct.
So-
At a charter, you actually don't have to have any requirements.
Okay, so we're asking people who are certified and qualified to stay at Bel Air to re-interview for their positions. And I, you know, I did hear your rationale about making sure that everybody, you outlined the expectations and they're tailored to the philosophy. But what's, what's the average years of service in Bel Air? Have you got teachers who've been there twenty years plus? Don't you think those staff members know what a traditional academy is? For heaven's sakes, they all taught Saxon Math fifteen years ago when it was our, I think they know how to teach that. I disagree with asking people who are qualified to re-interview for their positions. Now, I think they should be given the option to go to another school if they don't want to be at a traditional academy. But the people who say, yeah, I'm on board, I want to stay, they don't need to re-interview. You can provide them that PD so that they can be successful in those positions, in my opinion. I, is, did Dice Art treat their staff that way?
They did. And actually, that's what, that was the point that Dr. Z mentioned. He said, the administrators we talked to said that was this, one of the most single, most important pieces of the equation. So making sure that you had a hundred percent buy-in from the staff members that were present.
Well, you can get one hundred percent buy-in without making twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year veterans and the administrator re-interview, because I don't think we should be borrowing bad ideas from Dice Art. So I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
All right.
And this was, and more, just to be clear, it was more than Dice Art that had performed in a similar way. And so there were other districts that as well said it was in the interest of the school, the best interest that to have everyone reapply. So it was more than just Dice Art.
Ms. Tweedy? I disagree. Yeah, I'm baffled, but I was going to ask too, when, and I actually kind of feel like I was misled a little bit, because when this idea was first put in Board Updates, we were told that you guys were out talking to principals about the potential to make their campus a traditional to see if they were interested and they bought in. Like you were looking into it on the front end, it was something you were gonna do with a principal as opposed to to a principal. So I don't know why we would go out to schools and say, are you interested in becoming traditional? I, I'm assuming we didn't go out there and say, are you interested in reapplying for your job?
Well, President Ordway, Ms. Tweedy, what we did is, when we looked at the schools that had some of the enrollment trends that we had in the grasp before, those were the principals that we asked to join us in doing some of the site visits to the traditional schools. And so that's why they came with us to those site visits.
It was communicated to me is the principals were on board. Why would they have to be on board if you were gonna make them reapply for their jobs?
I, one, I do think the principals are on board as far as what we are doing. And they see that this is something that's important for the longevity of the school, to make sure that the schools can thrive in the long term.
Well, when you, when you communicate it that way, it sounds like you're keeping the principal. And then to go to that meeting last night, I, I'm sorry, I'm really upset with how people are being treated, so I am gonna say something. I was treated similarly when I worked here at Desert Wind, so I left the district. I know a lot of people that left the district. I'll be seeing them this weekend, but I, it was, it was disgusting. And I, I, to watch it be done again, and why I'm on the board, I sat at that meeting last night, I was horrified. I would never tell Dr. Finch with the other board members, you know, we changed the district's vision and mission, so we're gonna have Dr. Finch reapply for his job, and we go say that to all the employees here. I mean, I felt so horrible sitting there last night. It was embarrassing. I wouldn't want to work for a place that treated me that way. And-
Well, you don't now.
Yeah. I, I just, and then the teachers, if they're not on board, I mean, I work, and where I work, the way it's always been, if you're good enough to work at one of our schools, you're good enough to work at any of our schools. And that's the attitude, and it comes from the top down. And when they've had to repurpose, and they would send teachers with their students, they would say they're welcome on your campus, 'cause if you're good enough for any campus, and you need to welcome them, and I just, you guys are all displaced, have Merry Christmas, now go interview for twenty jobs till you find one? I mean, I, I understand the need for a traditional school, but I, if me voting for a traditional school is voting to treat people this way, I won't do it. Because to me, I wouldn't treat people this way.
I have a couple of questions. Has there been a poll taken amongst the staff to see who is interested in, in teaching in a traditional capacity versus who is not interested and who might want to, to look for another spot at another school?
No.
Um, is that? Um, okay.
Can we get that data?
Yeah, is it possible to, to get that information?
Yes.
Okay. So going back, sorry, Mrs. Moffett, going back to the staffing timelines, I was trying to write everything down, and I think I'm just so tired that I, the dates and the times and everything are, are becoming mush. So is it possible to get, what I would really like to see overall is a really nice timeline document of, this is when we're, you know, we posted for the principal this date, this is when we're expected to hire the principal, this is when we are going to start the, the staff, you know, opening window. This is the first tier, the second tier. This is when we're looking to put the parent group together. This is when we're looking to send out the RFP for curriculum, and, and have everything in a really nice, just timeline document. Because I think, at least for me, I know that when, I feel like I have too many variables up in the air, I get really anxious. And what I was hearing from parents last night is, they're really anxious because there are so many decisions that haven't been made because we're trying to make it inclusive. But I think that because we're trying to make it so inclusive, we're forgetting to put some good, healthy boundaries around that. So parents know that, okay, in February, these are the things that are gonna happen, and I know I can join that parent committee. And then in March, this is what's going to happen. So I'd like a timeline, so I understand what the next step is and what's already happened. And I think that if we can make that public for parents, that would make them feel a lot easier about some of the decisions that are being made. Moving on to the modernization-
I can comment to that, Ms. Reed. So, Ms. Reed, that is something we can provide you. We have that now. So we have a project management Gantt chart that contains the timelines for all of the important functions right there. And so some of those pieces go more into the weeds than what I was intending to communicate to the parents last night. Those were more bigger picture items for them, but we can absolutely provide that to you and then incorporate some of more of the detailed items that Ms. Moffett talked about with respect to staffing. But we do have that. We have a project management Gantt chart for that.
Perfect. And then I would really love to see something that we could push out to parents. And it doesn't have to go so much into the weeds, but I think that understanding when the principal is going to be hired, when the staff's going to be hired, when we're changing the name of the school, when we're going to have curriculum, and we're gonna have parent groups. I think those are all big, big things that if we can lay out for them for the next six months, I think we'll make their decisions on whether or not they want to be a part of the new Bel Air community would be helpful. And then I know that in all of the other modernization projects, and, and you just even painting projects, the principal has always been the one that's been driving the bus. So since we don't have a principal hired yet for this new school, who is making the decisions for the modernization project? Or are they going to be able to have input on some of those things?
President Ordway, Ms. Reed, so the, the school has been involved in this, in the process of the modernization. They have the institutional knowledge of all of the improvements that needed to be made. And as I mentioned, the, the school itself, the classrooms, aren't gonna be drastically changed from what our standards are in a, in a classroom setting, the improvements that we make during modernization projects. So we have been instrumental, the, the school personnel has been instrumental. We're about eighty percent done with design for the modernization project, and the school's been involved in it throughout the process.
Okay.
But the, the remaining twenty percent, I think Dr. Zurbach and myself and, and others that are working on this project will make sure that we make the, the, the final decisions that are necessary. As I mentioned, some design characteristics of it being kind of identified as a traditional school, maybe from the curb appeal. And also taking into consideration that if it is a boundaryless school, what that does for the impact of the vehicular demand that'll be placed on the school,
Okay.
since we won't be providing transportation. So, you know, some of those things that weren't considered when we were just working on the modernization of the, of the school, without it being converted to a traditional.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. O'Brien? I'd like to go back to Ms. Frank's point regarding the open enrollment date. And I, and I understand the need to create urgency, but this is also relative to just our overall boundary change. And, and that is, and I apologize for not bringing it up then also, but it is concerning to me as a parent that we put a deadline, and while I realize it's not a hard and, you know, fast deadline supposedly, but to our parents, it is. So what would changing that date to one twenty or one seventeen, that Friday, so that they feel like they do have time to process? I think that since we're being asked to make a decision on one fourteen, to not let our, our parents and community members be able to process that and, and give them three or three to five days, does that significantly impact our staffing ability to add those couple of days? So, well, 'cause it's, there's two different timeframes. One is for open enrollment for, because we're making boundary changes, and this is also, what I see up here is the open enrollment for Bel Air, which kind of falls in line with extending the open enrollment date, correct? So I, I would ask you, Dr. Finch, to consider extending that till one twenty.
That's not a problem.
And communicate that out to- And communicate that out to our community to give them what I hope would be a little bit of breathing space there.
We can do that, Ms. O'Brien. There's no problem with that. And we will also be clear in our communication when we message this out to parents about the broader window as well.
Okay, I do appreciate that. The link showed up, the ability to register, I guess, to participate in parent some committees here. This is on our website.
Yes, Ms. O'Brien, if you go to the Bel Air School website, and then you scroll down, it's the second chunk, I believe, where it says traditional school. And if, Updates, and when you click on that, you can see a variety of FAQ questions, and then there's a link to this form, which you see in the slide.
Okay, so that's on the Bel Air School website or the Traditional School update?
It is on, well, you would access it again by going to the Traditional School update, which is on the front page of the Bel Air website.
Okay, but I also can get to that going to the Deer Valley homepage as well.
That would be for Ms. Allred. Is that correct, Ms. Allred? Yep, yes, that's correct.
Yes. But I will tell you, while we were all sitting here, I did the click here to add my name to the email, to get email updates. Neither one of those links works right now. So.
We'll check that, Ms. O'Brien. I know we have used it a couple of times and it has worked well for us. And so we'll need to check that.
Okay, that'd be awesome to fix that. And then my other, my other question though is, can we, I know there were some concerns last night about notification of parents and how they're hearing about this information. And I believe if you could correct me, Dr. Zurbach, we said that there's a hard copy going to parents, and we're asking them to sign it or acknowledge that they're receiving notification about this change. Is that correct, or did I miss here?
Ms. O'Brien, that is sort of correct. It's more of an indication to us to make sure that parents are aware of what we are intending to do at the school. And so we would look for the parents to give us indication as far as whether they look to enroll their child in the open boundary school or whether they look to put their child in the new home school if the boundary, open boundary is approved. Or if they are looking to do a school outside of those two options.
Okay.
Really a way for us to track, right? So if we have our 400 and some students, we can look at that. And when we run that and we can see these 80 students have not replied back to us, then that's for us a way to know. We need to contact those 80 parents and make sure that they're aware of what we are intending to do. Because we want to make sure that all of them are aware of what we are planning to do next year.
And I do appreciate that. And does that information also contain this link or this information about the link to get on a parent committee?
Yes, it will. That has not gone out yet, that piece, and so, but that will. That will contain information about how to get involved.
It will. Okay, thank you for that. I do appreciate that. And then my, I guess, my last question is more about the name that you showed us earlier. And can you tell me why not Bel Air Traditional Academy as opposed to Traditional Academy at Bel Air?
I'll pass that to the team. That was a 20-minute conversation.
Yeah, we, we had a good conversation about that, probably about a half hour where folks were looking at different versions of that. And I think for that one, because it contains, it still contains, is the way you described it, Bel Air and the traditional, it came down to preference. And so we ultimately took a cabinet vote as far as where we stood with that. And so that's how we landed at the version that's on the slide.
Okay, so I know you didn't really ask for my opinion, but I'm gonna give it. Because I get to do that. Traditional, the Traditional Academy at Bel Air is very long, in my opinion. Bel Air Traditional Academy is short, quick. It will become BTA as opposed to TAB. Just, sorry, those are things I think about when I look at names and when I think of acronyms and stuff. And so, and B comes in the alphabet before T for whatever that is worth. So I'm putting my two cents in there because it's 10:35 at night. And I could, and I appreciate you all listening to my two cents and answering all my questions. And for all of you who stuck with us until 10:35 or 10:40 at night, I am interested in hearing, and I don't know if we said we were gonna get it, but in an update, what the average years of service is at Bel Air, if that's coming?
We did ask for that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
One of the, one of the points about the Traditional Academy at Bel Air, one of the selling points that Dr. Zee didn't mention is that if it turns into a franchise, for lack of a better word, it can be the Traditional Academy at, so, and that's what other school districts have been doing. They get three or four of these versions. They call them the Traditional Academy at, wherever, pick your town.
Well, we're not gonna really discuss that part right now.
Yeah, the way Chandler does it is it's Chandler Traditional Academy at Independence, Chandler Traditional Academy.
For example. I think Mesa does it that way.
I appreciate that. I was just, was.
Actually, I was voting for the other one too, but I was outnumbered.
Actually, we're not gonna really go into that right now.
So go ahead, Ms. Frank.
Just one other, I just wanted to clarify my earlier comments. I know when Dr. Finch had first floated the idea of a traditional academy, I think it's a great idea. I've seen it work in other districts. But I do have a problem with the way the staff at Bel Air and including the administrator is being treated. So as much as I want to support this, I can't vote for treating people badly. I can't support the way that this is being rolled out with the staff. And I'm just being open and upfront.
I understand. But when you say that, it's a direct attack on my character, that you're implying that I deliberately want to mistreat staff.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that.
That's how it comes across.
Okay, well, that's not how I'm intending it. What I'm saying is what you have borrowed from Dice Art, I think, is not a good idea.
No, we didn't borrow it just from Dice Art, but that's what they, as Dr. Zee mentioned, basically all the schools said the exact same thing.
I don't have a poor opinion of your character. I have a high opinion of your character.
I know, but I would never mistreat people. So to imply that is, I think is inappropriate.
The end result is you're gonna have a lot of people applying for your employee assistance plan.
I personally went there and, and the, actually, I had Dr. Zee, myself, and Jenna there to announce it to the staff personally. And so I, I don't know, I just think that I would never mistreat staff members on purpose or accidentally either. So I, I know what you're trying to say. I understand.
And we'll just agree to disagree on this one.
Okay, I agree.
And I wasn't trying to say you did it on purpose either, but it just is upsetting. And I think it's been done before to tap schools' employees in our district. It was definitely done at Desert Winds in our district, and you weren't here for that.
Correct, I wasn't. So I know I'm probably getting blamed for that as well, but I understand.
No, but I'm just saying to see this, I definitely don't want to repeat.
No, I understand.
And I think the other issue I'm having is when we, we're supposed to set policies and procedures that ensure equitable treatment of staff, a school cannot be new and not new at the same time. But yet, we're treating classified as if it's not a new school, and we're treating certified as if it's a new school. So we're not even having equitable procedures in HR with how we're treating this.
Yeah, again, that was from our research. That's what we learned. So.
Well, I'm not blaming anybody. I just was really, but I really don't want to see this done again. I've seen it done twice, and I was furious both times.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, Ms. Reed.
So is it possible maybe to somehow do a language change without violating policy to maybe that we're not making everybody, making Bel Air staff interview for their job, but maybe they're being screened to see whether or not they feel like they have the educational philosophy that is matching to a traditional school? So it's not necessarily an interview, but it's more of a conversation of whether or not you feel like you, you can do and teach to what, and abide by, I don't know, the beliefs and philosophy of what Bel Air Traditional or Traditional Academy at Bel Air is going to be? Is that, is that possible, or is that totally outside the realm of possibility here?
I'll jump in here. You, again, that kind of goes against what we learned from our research, from the administrators we talked to and the staff members we talked to. That was a super important piece, the ownership of it. And they all felt that the success of the system depended on that. It was a critical point. So we could gamble and try to make it successful without using their advice, so the people that have gone before us, but there will be a risk. And we don't really know, because we haven't done this before.
I think that it is 10:40 at night, and we have all given you our thoughts. But one of the closing thoughts on the staffing for the certified, I don't think the classified, I don't know that there's such a difference in how they're going to do their tasks, that they would have to something differently. Certified, I understand. And if I didn't say classified, that's one. So you understand that what we're saying is that if there are staff members at your school, at Bel Air right now, that receive the information on what is expected of them, might be some way that our human resource department, other cabinet-level members can have an interview, a conversation to make sure that they would be a fit. So just throw that around and let us know how that would hurt. Because I don't know that if you have the right people sitting there and have the right people, not the right people that, or people that don't want to move their classroom because it's, oh, I could do this. I'm talking about people that are absolutely gonna do it, because there are people there that want to do it. But you should be able to discern if that is possible, in my sleepy opinion right now. So could you take all of the things that we've said and see if there is, incorporate that? And we're certainly not sabotaging the beginning of what can be a great thing for our students or for our employees, but we want that insulting and devaluing is really because we want to make sure our teachers are in the right place. There are certain teachers that will not do well. Those people may already be sitting out there.
I mean, I've taught for years, and there are either teachers that hate that or like it. And I think if you had a conversation, they would be honest with you.
Right, so I just want to wrap it up with that and then, and then just.
We will definitely take that into advisement. So, thanks.
We can take that into consideration.
All right, so. I'm going to move to adjourn.
No, you're not. I'm gonna say at 10:45 at night, our last meeting of the decade. Go right ahead now and say it.
Oh, I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Third, fourth, and fifth?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.